I don't wanna fall asleep or pass away I wish that I could change it, I wish that I could stay Things would be different if I could stay awake But death is grabbed at hold and me is pulling me away A cup of coffee for my head but I won't make it out this bad I hope I go to heaven so I see you once again Hold on tight, I'll be gone before you know it Our love is everlasting even if I never show it I'm fading away, I'm fading too fast It's really a shame that our story won't last I know I can't go back and see you again It sucks, that's all and...
Don't stay awake for too long Don't go to bed I'll make a cup of coffee for your head I'll get you up and going out of bed Don't stay awake for too long Don't go to bed I'll make a cup of coffee for your head I'll get you up and going out of bed And I promise that one day I'll feel fine And I promise that one day I'll feel alright And I'll make a cup of coffee with the right amount of sugar How you like it? And I'll make a cup of coffee with the right amount of sugar How you like it? How you like it?
Don't know how long I'll stay for It's okay, I'll knock on your door Won't you come tell and get me? I like it when you hold me tight Make me feel nice The green in your eyes makes me feel warm inside
And I'll make a cup of coffee with the right amount of sugar How you like it? And I'll make a cup of coffee with the right amount of sugar How you like it? How you like it? Fly me to the moon Let me play among the stars Let me see what springs like unto bear and minds In other ways, hold my hand In other ways, baby kiss me Fill my heart with song and let me sing forevermore You are all I long for, I worship and adore In other ways, please be true In other ways, I love you Fly me to the moon Let me play among the stars Let me see what springs like unto bear and minds In other ways, hold my hand In other ways, baby kiss me Fill my heart with song and let me sing forevermore You are all I long for, I worship and adore In other words, please be true In other ways, I love you Fill my heart with song and let me sing forevermore You are all I long for, I worship and adore In other words, please be true In other ways, I love you
I'm going under and this time I fear there's no one to save This all or nothing really got a way of driving me crazy I need somebody to heal, somebody to know Somebody to touch, somebody to hold It's easy to say but it's never the same I guess you kinda like the way you numb all the pain Now the day bleeds into nightfall Yeah, you're not here to get me through it all Or let my guard down Yeah, then you pulled the rug I was getting kinda used to being someone you loved I'm going under and this time I fear there's no one to turn to This all or nothing we have loving got me sleeping without you Now I need somebody to know Somebody to heal, somebody to hurt To know how it feels It's easy to say but it's never the same I guess you kinda like the way you heal me You scare me, now the day bleeds into nightfall Yeah, you're not here to get me through it all Or let my guard down Yeah, then you pulled the rug I was getting kinda used to being someone you loved And I tend to close my eyes when it hurts sometimes I fall into your arms I'll be safe in your sound till I come back alive For now the day bleeds into nightfall Yeah, you're not here to get me through it all Or let my guard down Yeah, then you pulled the rug I was getting kinda used to being someone you loved But now the day bleeds into nightfall Yeah, you're not here to get me through it all Or let my guard down Yeah, then you pulled the rug I was getting kinda used to being someone you loved Or let my guard down Yeah, then you pulled the rug I was getting kinda used to being someone you loved
Was it an accident? I guess not It... It concentrated me To the exclusion of everything else It was like a drug What's everything else?
It's you, it's always you If I'm ever gonna fall in love, I know it's gonna be you It's you, it's always you Met a lot of people but nobody feels like you So please don't break my heart, don't tear me apart I know how it starts, trust me I've been broken before Don't break me again, I am delicate Please don't break my heart, trust me I've been broken before I've been broken I know how it feels to be open And find out that your love isn't real I'm still hurting, I'm hurting inside I'm so scared to fall in love But if it's you then I'll struggle It's always you If I'm ever gonna fall in love, I know it's gonna be you It's you, it's always you Met a lot of people but nobody feels like you So please don't break my heart, don't tear me apart I know how it starts, trust me I've been broken before Don't break me again, I am delicate Please don't break my heart, trust me I've been broken before No, I'm not the best at choosing lovers We both know my past speaks for itself If you don't think that we're right for each other Then please don't let history repeat itself 'Cause I want you, I want you There's nothing else I want 'Cause I want you, I want you You're the only thing I want It's you, it's always you If I'm ever gonna fall in love, I know it's gonna be you It's you, it's always you Met a lot of people but nobody feels like you So please don't break my heart, don't tear me apart I know how it starts, trust me I've been broken before Don't break me again, I am delicate Please don't break my heart, trust me I've been broken before
I'm at a party I don't wanna be at And I don't ever wear a sitting tie Wondering if I can sneak out the back Nobody's even looking me in my eyes Then you take my hand, finish my drink, say shall we dance? Hell yeah, you know I love you, did I ever tell you? You make it better like that Don't think I'm fitted at this party Everyone's got so much to say I always feel like I'm nobody Who wants to fit in anyway 'Cause I don't care when I'm with my baby, yeah All the bad things disappear Yeah, you're making me feel like maybe I am somebody I can deal with the bad nights when I'm with my baby, yeah 'Cause I don't care as long as you just hold me near You can take me anywhere You're making me feel like I'm loved by somebody I can deal with the bad nights when I'm with my baby, yeah We're at a party, we don't wanna be at Trying to talk but we can't hear ourselves With your lips I'd rather kiss them right back With all these people all around, I'm crippled with anxiety But I'm told it's where we're supposed to be You know what? It's kinda crazy 'cause I really don't mind When you make it better like that Don't think we're fitted at this party Everyone's got so much to say When we walked in I said I'm sorry But now I think that we should stay 'Cause I don't care when I'm with my baby, yeah All the bad things disappear Yeah, you're making me feel like maybe I am somebody I can deal with the bad nights when I'm with my baby, yeah 'Cause I don't care as long as you just hold me near You can take me anywhere You're making me feel like I'm loved by somebody I can deal with the bad nights when I'm with my baby, yeah
He says, "As long as I'm with you No one can hurt you Don't wanna lie here But you can learn to" "If I could change the way you just stand so You wouldn't wonder why you're here Then I'd deserve you" "As long as I'm with you No one can hurt you Don't wanna lie here But you can learn to" "If I could change the way you just stand so You wouldn't wonder why you're here Then I'd deserve you"
Take me to the rooftop I wanna see the world when I stop breathing Turning blue Tell me, love is endless Don't be so pretentious Leave me like you do If you need me You wanna see me You better hurry 'Cause I'm leaving soon Sorry, can save me now Sorry, I don't know how Sorry, there's no way out But down Down Taste for me these salty tears on my cheek It's what a year-long headache Does to you I'm not okay, I feel so scattered Don't say I'm all that matters Leave me Déjà vu If you need me You wanna see me You better hurry 'Cause I'm leaving soon Sorry, can save me now Sorry, I don't know how Sorry, there's no way out But down Call my friends and tell them that I love them And I'll miss them But I'm not sorry Call my friends and tell them that I love them And I'll miss them
Well, when you go Don't ever think I'll try to make you stay And maybe when you get back I'll be off to find another And after all this time that you still own You still look good for nothing I don't know So take your gloves and get out Better get out while you can And when you go Would you wait? Would you even turn to say I don't love you like I did yesterday Sometimes I cry so hard from pleading So sick and tired of the needless beating But baby, when they knock you down and out It's where you ought to stay And after all the blood that you still owe Another dollar is just another blow So fix your eyes and get up Better get up while you can And when you go Would you even turn to say I don't love you like I did yesterday And when you go Would you even turn to say I don't love you like I did yesterday, oh babe And when you go Would you have the guts to say I don't love you like I did yesterday
Everybody hurts sometimes, everybody hurts someday Everything will be alright, only the guns will say Everybody hurts sometimes, everybody hurts someday Everything will be alright, only the guns will say Memories come back, memories bring back home 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 Everybody hurts sometimes, everybody hurts someday Everything will be alright, only the guns will say Everybody hurts sometimes, everybody hurts someday Everything will be alright, only the guns will say
I love it when you call me señorita I wish I could pretend I didn't need you But every touch is ooh la 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 It's true, na 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 Oh, I should be running Oh, I keep on coming to you
Ran to Miami The air was hot from summer rains Sweat dripping off me Before I even know her name, la 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 Felt like ooh la la la, yeah, no Sapphire moonlight We danced around in the sand Tequila sunrise Her body fell out of my hands, la 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 Felt like ooh la la la, yeah
I love it when you call me señorita I wish I could pretend I didn't need you But every touch is ooh la 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 It's true, na 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 Oh, I should be running Oh, I keep on coming to you
Locked in a hotel There's just some things that never change You say we're just friends But friends don't know the way you text, ooh la 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 'Cause you know it's been a long time going Would you let me fall, oh When your lips undress and I touch your tongue Hold up your kisses, but you don't stop I love it when you call me señorita I wish I could pretend I didn't need you But every touch is ooh la 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 It's true, na 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 Oh, I should be running Oh, I know I love it when you call me señorita I wish it wasn't something hard to leave you But every touch is ooh la 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 It's true, na 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 Oh, I should be running Oh, I keep on coming for you How long I've been coming for you And I hope it means something to you Call my name and I'm coming Coming for you Coming for you
I love it when you call me señorita I wish I could pretend I didn't need you But every touch is ooh la 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 It's true, na 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 Oh, I should be running Oh, I keep on coming to you
They say, "Oh my God, I see the way you shine" Take your hand, my dear, and place them both in mine You know you stopped me dead while I was passing by And now I beg to see you dance just one more time Ooh, I see you, see you, see you every time And oh my, I, I, I like your style You, you make me, make me, make me wanna cry And now I beg to see you dance just one more time So they say, "Dance for me, dance for me, dance for me, oh" I've never seen anybody do the things you do before They say, "Move for me, move for me, move for me, eh" And when you're done, I'll make you do it all again I said, "Oh my God, I see you walking back" Take my hands, my dear, and look me in my eyes Just like a monkey I've been missing my whole life But you just beg to see me dance just one more time Ooh, I see you, see you, see you every time And oh my, I, I, I like your style You, you make me, make me, make me wanna cry And now I beg to see you dance just one more time So they say, "Dance for me, dance for me, dance for me, oh" I've never seen anybody do the things you do before They say, "Move for me, move for me, move for me, eh" And when you're done, I'll make you do it all again They say, "Dance for me, dance for me, dance for me, oh" I've never seen anybody do the things you do before They say, "Move for me, move for me, move for me, eh" And when you're done, I'll make you do it all again They say, "Dance for me, dance for me, dance for me, oh" I've never seen anybody do the things you do before They say, "Move for me, move for me, move for me, eh" And when you're done, I'll make you do it all again They say, "Dance for me, dance for me, dance for me, oh" I've never seen anybody do the things you do before They say, "Move for me, move for me, move for me, eh" And when you're done, I'll make you do it all again All again
All again
All again
All again
I book myself tables at all the best restaurants that need alone I burn myself fast cars just so I can drive them real fucking slow I like my own company, company, I don't need it I'm not always cold, I'm just good on my own, so good on my own I've always been told, one day I'll find Somebody who changes my mind If they come along, I won't think twice 'Cause I already got a good thing with me Yeah, I already got everything I need The best things in life are already mine Don't tell me that you got a good thing for me 'Cause I already got a good thing with me Yeah, I already done everything I dreamed I'm good by myself, don't need no one else Don't tell me that you got a good thing for me 'Cause I already got a good thing I make myself up just to dance in the mirror when I'm at home I pose and take pictures then send them to people that I don't know I like getting compliments, compliments how I'm feeling I'm not always selfish, just add a romantic tonight in my bones I've always been told, one day I'll find Somebody who changes my mind If they come along, I won't think twice 'Cause I already got a good thing with me Yeah, I already got everything I need The best things in life are already mine Don't tell me that you got a good thing for me 'Cause I already got a good thing with me Yeah, I already done everything I dreamed I'm good by myself, don't need no one else Don't tell me that you got a good thing for me I've always been told, one day I'll find Somebody who changes my mind If they come along, I won't think twice 'Cause I already got a good thing with me Yeah, I already got everything I need The best things in life are already mine Don't tell me that you got a good thing for me 'Cause I already got a good thing with me Yeah, I already done everything I dreamed I'm good by myself, don't need no one else Tell me that you got a good thing for me 'Cause I already got a good thing
Common love isn't for us We created something phenomenal, don't you agree? Don't you agree? Oh, yeah You got me feeling diamond rich Nothing on this planet compares to it, don't you agree? Don't you agree? Who needs to go to sleep when I got you next to me? All night, I'll ride out with you I know you got my back and you know I got you So come on, come on, come on Let's get physical, lights out, follow the noise Baby, keep on dancing like you ain't got a choice So come on, come on, come on Let's get physical Adrenaline keeps on rushing in Love the simulation we're dreaming in, don't you agree? Don't you agree? I don't wanna live another life 'Cause this one's pretty nice, living it up Who needs to go to sleep when I got you next to me? All night, I'll ride out with you I know you got my back and you know I got you So come on, come on, come on Let's get physical, lights out, follow the noise Baby, keep on dancing like you ain't got a choice So come on, come on, come on Let's get physical Hold on, just a little tighter, come on, hold on Tell me if you're ready, come on Baby, keep on dancing Let's get physical Hold on, just a little tighter, come on, hold on Tell me if you're ready, come on Baby, keep on dancing Let's get physical All night, I'll ride out with you I know you got my back and you know I got you I know you got my back and you know I got you. So come on, come on, come on. Let's get physical, lights out, follow the noise. Baby, keep on dancing like you ain't got a choice. So come on. Come on. Come on. Come on. Come on. Let's get physical. Let's get physical. Let's get physical. Let's get physical, physical, physical. Let's get physical. Let's get physical. Come on, fi- 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 physical.
Why should I wear my body no sleeping? You're on your tippy toes creeping around like no one knows. Think you're so grim. Bruising on both my knees for you. Don't say thank you or please. I do what I want when I'm wanting to. My soul's so sick enough. So you're a tough guy, like a really rough guy. Just can't get enough guy, just always so tough guy. I'm a bad type, pick your mama's side. Make your girlfriend mad tight. Should you show your death sign? I'm a big guy.
Tell me something, girl. Are you happy in this modern world? Or do you need more? Is there something else you're searching for?